Time is now 5:34 PM Eastern on April 8th. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Warwick School Committee. At this time, I ask Ms. Tedeschi to please call the roll.
Mr. Galligan?
Here.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Here.
Ms. Kirby Chapman?
Hi.
Mr. Wiggins?
Here.
Mr. Testa?
Here.
By present, we have a quorum. This time, I ask everybody willing and able to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's one of the best school districts in the state. We have a full agenda tonight of recognitions, beginning with our employee spotlights for the month of March, as presented by Ms. Rogeri.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. As you mentioned, we have a lot of recognitions tonight that we're excited about, so I'm excited to start off with our staff spotlight. First, we're going to honor our clerical at Tollgate, Susie Carvallo. I'm going to ask if anyone's here tonight to please stand to be acknowledged. Custodial courier at the Gorton Administration Building, Paul Holden. Tech integrationist at Pilgrim, Jen Randall. Assistant principal at Pilgrim, Bruce Fairbanks. Teacher assistant at Lippett, Kelly Rafferty. Elementary teacher at Robertson, Robert McGuire. Special educator at Cedar Hill, Vanessa McAllister. And last but not least, our assistant director of special education, Leslie Brow. Congratulations to all the spotlight winners.
Thank you, Ms. Rogeri. I do want to take a quick minute to recognize in attendance, former city council president, Steve McAllister. Thank you very much for coming out. Must have been something big on the agenda tonight. We are now on to our, one of the best parts after recognizing our employees, is recognizing our incredible students for all they've achieved and our student athletes for all they've achieved. So I'm going to suggest to my colleagues, maybe we go down and we stand down there and then we could present the recognitions from down there, so that way we don't keep coming up and down, up and down. Anybody against that? No, it sounds like a good time? All right, let's do it. So as we make our way down, I'm going to call up a guy who tries to emulate me for our first recognition tonight, and that is Mr. Kane.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. It's an honor to stand before you tonight to celebrate the outstanding achievements of our CTE culinary students. Our first recognition is Isabel Menard, who was recently awarded the 2024 Student of the Year by the Rhode Island Hospitality Association. Congratulations.
I'm going to have Chef Iron say a couple of words about Isabel.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It is true an honor to present Isabel Menard, a senior at Tollgate High School in the Warwick Air Career and Tech Center, who was awarded the 2024 Rhode Island Hospitality Association Student of the Year. Isabel has demonstrated exceptional leadership as a culinary team manager for the 2024 State Pro Start competition, where she not only showcased her culinary skills, but also inspired peers to strive for excellence. Her work ethic is unparalleled. Isabel is a diligent, respectful, and compassionate student who consistently engages with her classmates and instructors. She actively seeks opportunities to assist others, recently volunteering her time at the Ronald McDonald House in Providence, Rhode Island, to support families with children receiving care at Haswell Children's Hospital. Her selflessness and dedication to service are truly commendable. Isabel's culinary skills are equally impressive. She was selected as an Assistant in Skills USA State Competition during her first year, and the following year she competed as a junior, gaining invaluable experience and insight into the competitive culinary landscape. Her fierce dedication to her craft is evident in her openness and constructive feedback and her willingness to invest long hours refining her skills, which ultimately earned her the silver medal for baking and pastry this year at the Rhode Island Skills USA Competition. We're extremely proud of Isabel and as she continues on to her college to study equestrian studies. Congratulations again, Isabel.
We are proud to recognize a couple of other students from the culinary program, Kate Whelan, Victoria Salinas, Alexandra Mederos, Jalen Huffman, and Gianna Giofreda, who earned second place in the state competition for food service management with Pro Start. These incredible accomplishments are a testament to our students' dedication, skill, and passion for the culinary arts. To our culinary students, we are excited to see where your talents will take you next. Congratulations to you all. Kate Whelan? Victoria Salinas? Alexiana Mederos?
Congratulations.
Jalen Huffman?
Congratulations.
And Alise Gianna?
Thank you.
Congratulations, nice job.
Next, we have a few athletic recognitions, and they will be presented by our athletic director, Mr. Rex.
Welcome, everybody. It's an exciting night when we can come out and celebrate the many championships that we've had this past winter. As you can see, we have a bunch of student athletes, and we all know the hard work and dedication and drive, sweat, it takes to be a champion. So many athletes do it from time after time, and they don't make it to that culminating final championship, okay? But we have a bunch here today, so if you give me a few minutes, I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about each. And I'd like to start off with the EGTG Boys Championship Hockey Team. They won the D2s this year. It's tough to, sorry, I thought that was off. It's tough to really outdo what their boosters club did for them last week. They put on quite a presentation, jackets, balloons, whatnot. I mean, it was quite a big deal. But we want to make sure that we honor them, and our school committee honors them the way that we would like to also. So I'd just like to go over a few highlights from their season. They won the D2 regular season title with an 18-2 regular season record, a final record of 22-2, and an overall record for the year at 25-2, which included the non-league games. They were undefeated in the playoffs, defeating North Kingston in the quarterfinals. That was one of the teams that was able to beat us during the regular season. Cumberland in the semifinals, and they were 12-3-1 when we played them. And then beating Portsmouth, who was 14-3 in the regular season in the finals. For those of you that weren't there, it was an exciting game that went into overtime. So it was quite an accomplishment seeing EGTG survive a five-minute penalty at the end of the third period with the tie game. I really felt once we got beyond that, we were going to win, and we did. So they held them tight. Portsmouth did the extended power play and went on to win in the overtime on a goal by Jack Cannon. So I just kind of want to, someone else put this out there, and I just piece of it, but just so everybody that wasn't able to be there could get an idea of how that 30-some-odd seconds went. We won the faceoff, swiftly moved the puck into the Portsmouth zone. A flurry of activity resulted in a cover by the Portsmouth goalie and a faceoff in the right circle. Another faceoff was won by Joey Andriozzi. He pulled the puck back to Caleb Carpenter, who moved it to Timmy Madden for a solid shot towards the net that was saved. The puck found its way back to Carpenter at that point, who leveled a shot into traffic that deflected towards Garrett Carney in a high slot. He settled the puck with his skate, directing it to a charging Andriozzi, who fired a low shot hard towards the near post, where Cannon was waiting for a tip in goal. Thirty-five seconds into overtime, and we had a state championship. While Coach Juicy has always been quick to credit the team effort for their outstanding season, he also noted that five seniors, Garrett Carney, Joey Andriozzi, Jack Cannon, Cam Smith, and Timmy Madden were highly influential in the team's success. They weren't only good players, but they were good leaders. He also couldn't say enough about Wyatt Gelsheiser's outstanding play in goal all season. The following players were named to All Division Team, Joey Andriozzi, Timmy Madden, Wyatt, and Jack Cannon. Congrats to the 25 Rhode Island D2 champion, EGTG Tollgate Boys Hockey Team. At this time, we'd like to pass out the certificates of recognition, signed by Chairman Galligan.
While they get lined up, I didn't play hockey in school, I played baseball. Yep, you can stand right there. And so I had to learn some hockey verbiage to address them. And what you guys did with that puck was saucy. The goalie at the end of that game looked a little dusty. But you guys, with all the lettuce out there on the ice, you finished the game strong, so nice job. So Brady Ameral. Joey Andriozzi.
Congratulations.
Garrett Carney.
Congratulations, man.
Caleb Carpenter.
Congratulations, Caleb.
Frank Cronin. Brendan Darcy. Lot of lacrosse bros, huh? Austin DuFresny. Wyatt, I'm going to apologize here. Wyatt Gelsheiser? Not here. Jack Cannon? Zach Lapierre? Timmy Madden?
Congratulations.
Anthony Mazzio?
Congratulations.
Brady Parks? John Prue? Cam Renick? Marcus Rowe? Cale Shanley? There we go.
Congrats, man.
Brady Slinn? Cam Smith?
Congratulations.
Nick Woods?
I apologize for the mishap, for missing some certificates. I'm just going to introduce you to the rest of the guys, and then we'll make sure that we find the certificates. Matt Lorenko? Zach Pacico? Trevor Derobio? Head coach Jeff Juicy, and assistant coach Max Hagenberg.
Congratulations. Do you want me to reach over? Mr. Rex, come on.
Congratulations to our hockey champions. Next, we would like to congratulate our Tollgate Boys Wrestling and Girls Wrestling. We had girls champions and boys champions, as well as team champions today. So our Tollgate Wrestling Champions won the Division 2-3 State Champs this past season. The Titans placed 10 wrestlers in that tournament, on the championship tournament, it was 24 teams, we had 10 place. That was the most medals that Tollgate has ever placed in one tournament. Here's how they, so that's pretty good, right? 10 wrestlers. Here's how they placed in the D2 States, along with some of their individual accolades. I want to go to as quickly as possible. At 106 pounds, Jack Sabatelli placed second, also earned All Division Academic All-State honors and reached 100 Career Win Club. Congratulations, Jack. A 113-pounder Colton Wertz placed third and also earned Academic All-State honors and placed second at the freshman states. A 120-pound Jared Sabatelli placed first and also earned All Division honors, Academic All-State, and reached 100 Career Win Club. A 126-pounder Marcus Ramos placed first and also earned All Division honors, second Team All-State honors, and reached 100 Career Win Club. At 132 pounds, Hoppas Salinas, who's a two-time Girl State Champion and will be recognized later, and also qualified twice for the New England Championships. At 138 pounds, Ben Donencourt placed second and earned All Division honors and reached the 100 Career Win Club. 144-pound Luke Bredor went 2-2 and was a state qualifier. 150-pound Casey Wertz placed first and also earned All Division Academic All-State, placed fifth at the States, and reached 100 Career Win Club. fifth at the States, and reached 100 Career Win Club. At 157 pounds, David Robita placed fourth and also was this year's 157 pound freshman state champion. Job, David. At 165 Brendan Riley was also a state qualifier. At 175 pound Caden Williams placed fifth and also earned All Division honors. At 190 pounds, Mataversa, who also placed fourth and qualified and also placed fourth at this year's state's championship freshman. 215 pound Colton Flag placed second and also earned All Division honors. And our heavyweight John Ritchie placed third and also earned Academic All-State honors. Coach Sabatelli in his 28-year career said that this was perhaps the most decorated groups of wrestlers he's been able to coach. So that speaks pretty highly. Just some quick stats. Prior to winning the state title, they had an overall do-meet record of 23 and 6 wrestling in Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. The freshman team this season took six out of 38 teams. And despite losing 11 seniors, the future looks pretty good for these Tollgate Titans. They also did very well at the Marshfield Invitational Tournament, which they seem to do every year. So at this time, I'd like to pass out certificates to our wrestlers. Congratulations. Luke Bauder. Ben Denoncor. Marcos Ramirez. Brendan Riley. John Ritchie. David Robita. Jack Sabatelli. Jared Sabatelli. Colton Wertz. Kason Wertz. And lastly, but certainly not least, our head coach Jerry Sabatelli and our assistant coach Joe Leo, who is going to be leaving us for bigger and better things. Okay, now we also have some individual awards that we'd like to recognize will stay in the sport of wrestling. We would like to call back up Hoppa Salinas, otherwise known as Victoria. She had a career mark of 20 and 8. She won the Griswold Girls Invitational Championship in '24-'25. She won the 2025 TK Invitational Tournament held at North Kingston High School. She's a two-time Rhode Island State Champion and a two-time New England Qualifier. Hopper. We also have another female all-state wrestler from Pilgrim High School. Her name is Allison Patton, Ally Patton. She's a three-sport athlete. She's played soccer, softball, and wrestling. She competed at the national level in wrestling and in the summer she plays AAU softball and club soccer. When she, her accomplishments from last year, she lost to the defending national championship, champion at the New England Tournament. She placed second. She also received All-American honors at the Beast of the East Tournament. Her career record is 70 and 33. She was selected as a team captain as a sophomore in 2025. She became a two-time state champion, a New England finalist, Rhode Island Boys State Qualifier, freestyle, she's a freestyle wrestling state champion in '24. And Ally's success is a result of a combination of very supportive family and friends and an unrivaled dedication to compete. Ally. And last but certainly not least, our last honoree is a national champion. Her name is Vanessa Jones. She's a junior at Tollgate High School. She is the new USA Track and Field National Champion. She won the Class A Rhode Island High School Title with a throw of 57 feet. She placed first in the weight throw at the Yale Track Classic and the East Coast Invitational. She won the Rhode Island State Title with a 59-foot, two-inch throw that tied her own school record. She won the New England Championship with a throw of 57.525. And she earned the gold medal and was crowned Girls National Champion in the weight throw at the Nike National Invitation Track and Field Championships with a throw of 58.175. Seeing she's just a junior, there are probably more great things to come.
So we're very fortunate in the city of Warwick to have an amazing organization by the name of Volunteers of Warwick Schools. And a few weeks ago, they put on a reading week at several of our elementary schools throughout the district. It was incredible to see Ms. Spirito does a fantastic job, Ms. Townsend, as well as all the other members of the Volunteers of Warwick Schools coordinating, getting volunteers in to read to different, to all of the classes. It's incredible going into the classrooms and reading to the kids and seeing them light up that they have a guest reader. But this next group being honored certainly are destined for great things because they chose to step away from their regular day-to-day activities and they certainly are role models for these younger kids that they read to. So at this time, we're gonna turn it over to Ms. Spirito and Ms. Townsend to help us recognize our next group of individuals.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Townsend, I'm usually up here saying why is Union President, but today I'm proud to share with you that I'm the Volunteers of Warwick Schools Executive Director, Executive Board Chair. Sorry. I'm gonna introduce our Executive Director Nicole Spirito and she's gonna make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. As Mary Townsend said, my name is Nicole Spirito. I am the Executive Director of Volunteers of Warwick Schools. Tonight is with great pride and heartfelt appreciation that we take a moment to recognize an outstanding group of young individuals, the members of the Pilgrim High School Football Team, for their remarkable participation in this year's Vows Reading Week. These student athletes didn't just show up, they showed up with heart, with spirit, and with a powerful sense of purpose. They walked into those elementary school classrooms not only as athletes, but as role models, mentors, and community leaders. Through the simple yet deeply impactful act of reading to young students, they created moments that many children will remember for a long time. Our pilgrim players brought stories to life. They sparked laughter, curiosity, and inspiration. They made real, meaningful connections with students, many whom look up to them not just for what they do in the field, but also for the compassion and leadership they showed off the field. The feedback from the principals and teachers has been overwhelmingly positive. They were moved by the energy, the respect, and the joy our players brought into their schools. One teacher even shared that students were still talking about the football players who read to us, days later asking when they'd be back again. These players made an impact far beyond what we could have hoped. They showed our youngest learners that reading is powerful, that kindness matters, and that leadership comes in many forms. To our pilgrim football players, thank you. Thank you for stepping up, for sharing your time and hearts, and for representing your school and team with such class. You made your coaches, your school, and your community incredibly proud. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Coach Blake Simpson.
I just want to recognize our players who came today and those who weren't allowed to make it. Alex Earl. Andreas Filippo. Chris Manatakas. Colin Burke. Christian Minelli. Ty Johnson. Cam Smith. Cam Martins. Connor Fitzgerald. And Aiden Yelly. And three of our players who also weren't able to come tonight, Hunter Shobel, Anthony Farhat, and Adam Elrazoli.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you again to the pilgrim football players, Coach Blake, the best football team on the north side of the city. So at this time, we're gonna recognize, this is a first, Pilgrim High School this year had a debate team. It was their first year and they did an absolutely incredible job performing well at all of their competitions. And I'm gonna call their coach up here in a second, but all I can say to these athletes is that debate skills are something you can use no matter what, in the boardrooms, in the courtrooms. I try to use it in debates with my wife, often losing. And so these skills, I might need to come back to you guys for, but I just want to say congratulations to you on a fantastic year. And if Ms. Biz would come up and please say a few words.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. My name's Meredith Bizergan and I am the debate team coach at Pilgrim High School. As Mr. Galligan said, it was our first year of competition, so we didn't really know what to expect. We had a brand-new team in September. We had seventeen, fifteen to seventeen kids, depending on who could come with sports and things like that. But let's say seventeen kids that, again, came to debate clubs and meetings and, again, we didn't really know the rules or anything back in September. And then we had our first debate in November, learned the rules, and from there, the kids did an amazing job. They participated in four debates during the regular season. And just to give you a sense of what that commitment is, debates take place on Saturdays. They show up at eight and we don't get out of there till four. Each student participates in three, like, on-demand debates where they have to argue a case or argue against a case, and then in the third round, they have to come up with a case on the spot. So the communication skills that they needed to come up with, that on-the-spot thinking where they had to listen, think about how they're gonna counter-argue, it was amazing to see their growth throughout the season because that is an incredibly difficult thing to do. I have to say, each person on our team showed amazing growth, but almost everybody got recognized with a certificate or a trophy at every single debate, which means they were in the top 25% of students competing on that particular day. And to give you a sense of who we were competing against, there were thirteen schools, both public and private, from across Rhode Island. So the competition was pretty fierce and as a newbie team, we did a pretty amazing job. So it was just, again, to see them articulate themselves, think on the spot, grow those skills. And by the end of the season, they have time constraints for each debate, so they can speak for up to seven minutes. At the beginning, they were doing like three minutes. By the end, they had to rush to get through all their ideas and articulate the argument within that seven-minute timeframe. So standing up there and speaking for that much time, you know, it's really difficult for most people, but for these high school kids, they did such a great job. And again, the competition was really fierce. I also want to say, we made states. So we had nine students make states and we have two members that were awarded the second-place novice team, which means that we were a first-year team. So they earned second place in the whole competition at states, which again is an amazing thing. And we have another member here that placed in states or made states as well and qualified. So again, just as a newbie team, we were ecstatic about the results and I'm just super proud of them. I'd also like to thank the parents because for each debate, parents had to volunteer to be the judges for these debates, so it was also a time commitment for them as well. And Mr. Galligan, if you'd like to get involved in debate, we're always looking for judges. So maybe I'll be extending that invitation out for next year. So yeah, you have to check with your wife, probably. But anyway, thank you so much, school committee, for recognizing us. They worked really hard. I'm super proud of them. And if we could have the three members here come down, only three could come today, but we have Tiffany Blanco, Taylor Mark, and Caitlin Healy. So come on down, girls. Great job this year.
Individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person, with public comments not to exceed 45 minutes. Though the content of comments will not be restricted, it is the hope of this committee that citizens, committee members, and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view, and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for agenda items only. A second public comment session is available later in the meeting. For all other topics or concerns, members of the public are permitted to speak. During both of the comment periods, speakers are asked to state their name for the record.
So many names, and, actually, the first comment I wanted to make was just, you know, congratulations to everyone who was recognized. You can see the outstanding students we have in this district academically, athletically. We've got the Career Center represented, and I think people forget how many students we have and how many outstanding students we have, and working with those outstanding students are outstanding teachers and coaches, and educators, and instructors, and so on. So it was, and it was nice being here for that, because usually, you have the recognitions, and you go into closed session, then you come out for public session, and a lot of times, there isn't much of an audience here, although the people here for the rest of the meeting, there aren't that many as usual, but, anyway, so congratulations to everyone who was recognized. The agenda item I just wanted to talk about right now would be the study as to the feasibility of moving the ad building to a rental unit or so on. It's a good idea, always, to look at how money is being spent and to see if you could do things, you know, with less cost in another way. I think probably right now, though, if you look at what the city is doing, they're renting the Sawtooth Building at quite an exorbitant amount. They were, probably would have been better off buying the Sawtooth Building and renting to AAA. So I know you probably have to have more study done as to whether or not you should move out of Gorton, but Gorton, I think, and Green have that stipulation that the usage has to be for educational purposes. I know the district has made good use of Gorton over the last few years, putting elementary schools temporarily into the first floor while the school receives the necessary upgrades and repairs. And I know that the WELC will be looking for space at a certain point. I don't know if that would be good for a preschool, that area, but you might be able to move somebody else in there and use something else for the preschool. I do know the district will need more space, especially if you look at all of the houses that are being built, all the apartment units that are going up. We probably are going to have a boom in
Thirty seconds.
Students coming in, so it's good to conduct such a study, and then that way, too, you can turn around and say to whomever might be interested, "Hey, look, we studied this, and this is what we found out." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, we're on to recommended actions. First item, routine matters. I'm looking for a motion to move approval of the minutes of public session from March 11th, 2025.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Looking for a motion of approval of minutes of executive session, March 11th, 2025.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Looking for a motion of approval of minutes of school committee special meeting, March 19th, 2025.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Looking for a motion of approval of transfers, April 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Looking for a motion of approval of warrants, April 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we're on to announcements. Personnel is presented, as presented by Ms. Ruggieri.
Good evening, once again. Before you tonight, I have some resignations that will require a vote. We say goodbye to Janessa Sasse, teacher assistant at Hoxie; Katie Major, night custodian at Tollgate; elementary teacher at Park, Kathy Janess, with 27 years of service; an instructional coach at Lippett Norwood Elementary, Jen Gary, with 19 years of service; and finally, Teresa Tedeschi, as the school committee secretary. Just want to point out, she is retaining her superintendent-secretary role, it's just from the school committee this resignation applies to.
Looking for a motion to move approval on the resignations and retirements as presented.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood. Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Are there any we want to remove and not approve?
I wish we could keep you.
Anyone we want to carve out? Seeing none?
We will miss you.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Ms. Ruggieri.
Okay, before you tonight, it also requires a vote, and we have some leave of absences. We have several for this month, because the deadline for the requests is April 1st, so we have an influx here. First off, we have Lisa Sweet, secondary special educator at Tollgate; Darlene Netco, 50% for her union president role, English teacher at Tollgate; Lydia McDowell, French teacher at Tollgate; Caitlin Major, kindergarten special ed teacher at Oakland Beach; Michaela Harper, speech-language pathologist at Warwick Veterans; and Tracy Sutherland, MLL teacher, as she is now the MLL coordinator.
Looking for a motion to move approval on the leave of absences and parental leaves as presented.
So moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
And finally, we are welcoming some folks to the district, as well as announcing some changes and assignments. So first off, we welcome Craig Enos, as our Executive Director of Finance. He was here this evening, but he had to leave, unfortunately. Secondly, we have Kevin Oliver, he will be transferring to the Assistant Director of Capital and Construction Projects. Due to that move, Ms. Donna Higgins will be the Acting Director of Facilities and Operations. Both of those moves will be effective April 14th. And we also welcome Nadia Xavier, Main Office Clerk at Pilgrim High School, and Jerry Solas, Night Custodian at Pilgrim High. So welcome to all new employees, and congratulations to those who are changing roles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to the district. At this time, we're on to donations and correspondences. There was a donation of a 3D printer valued at $2,200 from Mr. Arthur Bradford, from the Warwick Area Career and Technical Center Electronics Program. So on behalf of the school committee, we'd like to thank Mr. Bradford for his very generous donation, and I'd like to now turn it over to our interim superintendent, Mr. Bill McCaffrey, who would also like to say a few words of thanks.
Arthur Bradford is here this evening. Arthur, I'd ask that you please stand. I had the pleasure of being Arthur's principal back in the day. He was in the electronics program and Cisco program simultaneously, as well as attending CCRI at the same time. By the time he finished high school, he had completed all his coursework at CCRI, he went on to the University of Rhode Island. Since then, he's graduated from URI, and he started his own startup company. Congratulations, Arthur, it's great to see you again, and thank you for your donation.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford, for your donation. Appreciate it. We're on to adoption of policies. First read, looking for a motion to move approval, policy JFA, student grievance policy.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa and Ms. Hazelwood. Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We're now on to new business, discussion presentation, informal informational presentation on nasopharyngeal carcinoma by Mr. Thomas Montero. Mr. Montero, if you'd like to come on down to the podium here, to my left, your right. Before Mr. Montero gets going, I've got to just say, this is an incredible individual who reached out proactively to the school committee, asking to come here tonight and provide this presentation, not only to us, but the entire community, so, please, Mr. Montero. You're just going to want to turn that microphone on, there's a switch there.
It's good.
It's on.
You're all set.
There it is.
All right, there we go. First of all, I want to say thank you for having me tonight. The purpose of this slideshow that I made here is to raise awareness for my cousin, Madison Broder. She is a ninth-grade student at Pilgrim High School, and my goal is to bring the whole Warwick community together to support her and many other people with different types of cancers. So Maddie is a dedicated ninth-grade student at Pilgrim High School. On February 27th, 2025, Maddie received a diagnosis of nasopharyngeal carcinoma. This is a rare form of nasal cancer that predominantly affects men aged 50 to 70. This cancer is most common in regions such as China, Southeast Asia, Northern Africa, and the Arctic. Despite this challenging situation, Maddie has remained true to her beliefs and embodies kindness, intelligence, hard work, and athleticism. Maddie has two younger brothers, Logan and Maddox, who are students at Sherman Elementary and Lighthouse Preschool respectively. This slideshow outlines my vision for positive changes across all schools in Warwick in support of students like Maddie. My goal is to support my cousin, Maddie, and raise awareness for childhood cancer across our school district, which includes one early childhood center, 13 elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. I propose a comprehensive donation program in the next few slides. First of all, bracelet fundraising. My aunt has made custom bracelets. We can establish a program where individuals who make a donation will receive a bracelet as a token of appreciation. This not only helps raise funds for Maddie's medical expenses and research for this type of cancer, but also serves as a symbol of support within the community. My second idea was an awareness day. We can designate a specific day for students and staff to wear yellow to promote awareness for childhood cancer. Yellow is widely recognized as the color representing childhood cancer awareness. This initiative will encourage discussions about childhood cancer and foster a sense of unity and support amongst students. If you would consider this idea, the date could land on Friday, May 2nd, 2025. This could also bring awareness to our GoFundMe page, which would also help get donations. Dragonfly symbolism. Incorporating the dragonflies, a symbol of transformation, change, and rebirth, will add a meaningful element to our campaign. This will serve as a reminder of resilience and hope resonating with the journey that Maddie and other children facing similar challenges endure. Dragonflies also symbolize our ability to overcome times of hardship. They remind us to reconnect with our own strength, courage, and happiness. By implementing these initiatives, we can make a significant impact in supporting Maddie and raising awareness about childhood cancer, while fostering a spirit of compassion and community involvement throughout our district. I understand the profound impact that cancer has on individuals and families, especially with my three years at Windman, I've had two run-ins with cancer since sixth grade. I had a friend named Naveya, who unfortunately passed away from a battle with glioblastoma, which is a brain cancer, and it is clear that supporting Maddie during this challenging time is a heartfelt mission. With the money we raise, we would like help pay for research and treatment for Maddie. And the research could go for finding a different way of treatment, or what causes it. In conclusion, Maddie and our family would greatly appreciate your support in initiating a fundraising campaign for her. Together, we can demonstrate that she is not alone in this fight, and as a united community, we can help her navigate this difficult time. Additionally, I hope to raise awareness about this rare type of cancer, exploring potential treatment options beyond radiation, such as surgical interventions. Your contributions will not only provide essential assistance to Maddie, but also contribute to the broader understanding and awareness of this cancer. Thank you for listening. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Montero, I have no questions, I just have a few comments. First, you know, I said it as you were coming up, but I think you have a tremendous future ahead of you. So many people come up with great ideas, but they don't take that next step, right? And you initiated conversation with the school committee, proactively put this presentation together, came here today, something a lot of people can't do, got up, spoke publicly, and so I've got to commend you for that. I can tell you have a very bright future ahead of you, and I just wish you all the best in this mission that you're about to set forth on. I hope you're extremely successful, because you're not only going to help your cousin Maddie out, but you're going to help so many other people out, so thank you for what you're doing, and I look forward to seeing how successful you are in life.
Thank you.
Any other members of the committee looking for comment? Mr. Testa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tyler, I have to thank you for this, and I echo everything that the chair said, and I think at the end of the day, this is done out of love, it's done out of love for your cousin, it's done out of a general sense of thinking of other people, so I can't commend you enough for your willingness to step up and do this, so personally, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the committee? Mr. Wiggins.
To echo my colleagues' comments as well, you're an incredible soul, like, it's obvious, the love that you have for your family and what you're going to do going forward is inspiring. This will be successful because of you and because of who you are. I don't know you, just met you tonight, I'm already impressed. I'm already impressed, and I can see the good in you, just that good soul of a human that you are and are going to be going forward. So really, thank you for being here tonight and sharing this story.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kirby-Chapin.
I will forth and fifth. A forth and fifth, everything what they're saying. It's so great, and the fact that you knew to be resourceful and use, you know, your resources, like the school system. I love dragonflies. Please sign me up for a bracelet. And Maddie sending you all the love and prayers, and you've got this, girl. You've got this.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby-Chapin. Ms. Hazelwood.
I'm just going to echo and co-sign everything that my colleague said. I know he was nervous when we got here, but I know Thomas's mom and his Aunt Jen and her family, Maddie's family, you did an amazing job. You're brave. You're brave, and I see you speaking in front of many, many people in the future. This is just the beginning for you. So thank you so much for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Thomas. Maddie, best of luck. We're pulling for you, the whole community. Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Cardillo, discussion update, Warwick Special Education Advisory Committee.
My name is Jennifer Cardillo. I'm a parent of a senior at Tollgate High School who is supported by special services. I'm here tonight as the Chair for the Warwick Special Education Advisory Committee, just to give a brief update. And luckily, a lot of recognition too, since that seems to be the theme for the evening. We did not have our March meeting due to lack of space within the buildings within the school district, but we'd have located space for a combined March and April meeting. That meeting will be tomorrow night, April ninth, at six P M. at the Administration Building. It's in the library down in the lower level, so we welcome all members of the community to attend. We did not, however, want to delay our recognition that normally would have been presented at that meeting, and the members of the Warwick community stood up strong. We have five recognitions to share tonight for Warwick's teachers and staff, and in one case, some students. So the first one is for the entire Warwick NEC I E S staff, so all teachers, teacher assistants, behavior specialists, and social workers. They have been praised many times over the last few months by parents for their ongoing efforts and care being provided to children, their continuous communication, attention to detail with student accommodations, daily notes home, supporting student growth, and the like. So overall, they've done a tremendous job. It was quite a long recognition, but I'm absolutely delighted that I was able to share that with you tonight. The second one is for Lindsay Guglietta, who is a case manager and resource teacher at Veterans Memorial High School, cited by one of the parents on keeping up with my child's needs and contacting me with what his expectations are, where he's at, and where he needs to be, and making me feel like part of the team to help my son accomplish his goals, along with supporting him for sports activities at school as a tool to reinforce positive expectations. So congratulations to Lindsay. Next one is for Dee Recor, the guidance counselor at Veterans Memorial High School, her ability to go above beyond and help out my family in times of educational and medical issues, and for her interest in always looking for additional information and supports to help. And then finally, on the teacher's side, before we get to the last one, is Kristen Pina, L E A at Norwood Elementary. Kristen Pina goes above and beyond behind the scenes every day for the entire special education population in Norwood, including staff members, students, and their families. And many parents have reported that they have left I E P meetings this year feeling a sense of community and feeling heard, which is something having participated in many of those, I can vouch, is really difficult. So congratulations to Kristen. The last recognition is for Tollgate High School's Drama Club. They recently presented The Alibis. It was on three twenty-eight and three twenty-nine, which were Friday and Saturday night. The reason I'm recognizing The Drama Club is because I'm, Ms. Netco may have to correct me, but I know there were at least three students that were supported by special services at Tollgate and by The Drama Club to participate in the play and had speaking roles, and I believe for at least two of them, and it might have been all three, it was their first time speaking. I have a feeling there was more that I don't know of, but I can vouch for at least the three. Ms. Georgia Testa and Ms. Darlene Netco did a tremendous job with supporting those students, along with the students, the director of The Alibis. So congratulations to them for their ongoing commitment for student services. For the May meeting, we have invited members of the transition program to share updates on how the program has been progressing. There has been a lot of work that has been done over the last few months to respond to a number of concerns. They are going to share their new brochure, new website, and other program changes that have been made since the time that was raised, I believe at the February school committee. If anyone has any questions, you can always reach out to me, jennifercardillo@work@gmail.com. I don't know if there's any questions at this time.
No questions, just more comments. Next time you have a space issue, please let us know. I know that my colleagues up here and I, we could probably find you a nice, warm, welcoming space for the meeting to occur somewhere here within the city of Warwick, so please let us know about that.
Absolutely.
Also, want to definitely give a shout out to Mr. Gary McCooms, Principal of Hoxsey Elementary, for his tremendous work with that unified tournament a couple of weekends ago.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Over four hundred student athletes that participated in it. You couldn't move between the two gymnasiums. My wife parked three, four streets away from Hendrick Inn. The roads were packed, the parking lot was packed. I think there were probably fourteen, fifteen, maybe sixteen hundred people that were there. Higher, Mr. Wiggins, it was incredible. It was incredible to see, so I want to commend them. And then I also, I want to say, we had the polar plunge three weeks ago. The water was frigid for Special Olympics of Rhode Island, and Ms. Cusino last month brought up how we all need to get there and have our bathing suits on. I brought my S P F thirty-five. I was spraying myself down before we jumped, and Mr. Wiggins and I, we couldn't believe it, missing, so.
I agree, and thank you for noticing, but I did tell you that my roommate and I had a previous engagement with our business.
So next year, we're going to do it all together with the WeSat group. We're going to go down there, we're going to get a party bus, and we're going to jump in the water together.
And I'll bring my parka.
Maybe you'll convince me to jump.
Yes, we will. I've got a year to work on you. Thank you again for everything that you do. My colleagues have any comments for WeSat? Lena? Thank you, Ms. Cardillo.
Thank you so much. Oh, go ahead, Leah.
That the play was great. The Tollgate play was great. Thank you very much, Ms. Netco, for your work there. Thank you. And to Georgia Testa, she's not here, but she did an amazing job with her crew, so.
Absolutely. So, and I think this goes to show everything that's happened tonight, that making sure you get recognition and them sending to us is really important. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Cardillo. Ms. Cusino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just want to congratulate Mr. McCooms and all of the elementary principals. We had twelve out of thirteen schools there. We had about two thousand people. Mr. Jeff Smith from Special Olympics and his team were amazing. Thanks to our community partner Hendrick Inn for their building and their kindness. Jamal Gomes was amazing, helping us. The people who brought canned goods, the families for bringing their kids, our athletes, our cheer squads. We had volunteer coaches. We had Mr. Rick's brother. We had a whole bunch of other community people, Mr. Rick's from the S E L office. Yeah, it was amazing. And to pay it forward, all of our athletes, no one knows this, so coming out right now, our athletes and our cheer squads have been invited to be part of opening ceremonies for the Summer Games at U R I in honor of Special Olympics.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Pretty cool. More to come on that.
Thank you, Ms. Cusino. We are now on to item three, discussion update, F Y two thousand and twenty-five, monthly financial report and year-end review. Mr. Crowley.
Got it. Good evening. We are still working to make sure that the fiscal twenty-six budget is as solid as we can possibly do it. We're also working on improving the reports that go to the school committee so that you have information that I think presents a much better picture of the status of all of the various budget lines throughout the course of the year. The new controller, Ramon Rodriguez, is working on the audit for fiscal twenty-four, and there is also a consultant who is analyzing what happened in fiscal twenty-five. So there's work going on in all three fiscal years. We're trying to make sure that, you know, going forward, there's a very solid footing, particularly for the new Director of Finance. We're trying to do everything that we can to make sure that, you know, he can hit the ground running, and, you know, there's nothing that's holding him up. More than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Crowley? Mr. Testa.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I don't want to get into too much detail here because as I looked at this, you know, when I look at F Y twenty-five actual budgeted to the actual, to the balance due and the percentage remaining, and I think I said at the last meeting, if you look, we're two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year. So if you're two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year, and you've still got thirty-four, thirty-five percent to expend, you would look at that and say, all right, I'm on track. This is going to work. And I still see that in the salary line, and, you know, my understanding is the salary line is one of the biggest drivers of the deficit. So my point in a nutshell, there's a couple of areas here that either we did a very bad job budgeting the previous year. But if I looked at this real quick, I would say, okay, there's going to be a small deficit, not a major deficit. So again, it's just, the reports are being worked on, which is fine. I just, maybe next month I'll get a little more clarity. I may email these questions separately instead of hashing it out over here. So that's it, that's all I got. Thank you.
In terms of the percentages that you're looking at, oftentimes, it's a question of timing, as to, you know, what hits the books at a particular time. So something may hit the books a little bit earlier in one year, a little bit later in the other year, and vice versa. So the numbers, that's why I want to be able to give you, you know, like, three years' worth of numbers, so you have a much better idea of what's happening over the course of time.
Yeah, and I would just say that a couple of the biggest things that struck me were out-of-district tuitions, and we're trending to be a million dollars in the hole on that. And then electricity. For some reason, we budgeted eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so far, you had a date, we spent over a million. So there could be a bit of a timing issue there. I don't think timing is really that applicable to electricity. There was one here, and I think, Mr. McCaffrey, this might be you. It's five, three, two, and eight. It's student assistance. We budgeted three ninety-five. We've spent five-ten, but what compromises student assistance? I just don't remember what comprises that budget line.
What I'll do is I'll dig into that and get back to you tomorrow sometime with that information.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember. I looked through some of my old notes, but I just couldn't find anything.
Right now, we have the summary of the whole account in front of us, but I'd like to dig into it a little bit deeper so you can take a look.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? So I have just a few comments regarding this. The first is, I had the opportunity to speak to a few people in your finance office today. I just want to say thank you so much to the finance team, and Dr. Taylor, and Ms. Regeri, and anyone else who has helped out here. What they've done in a month is nothing short of amazing. For those in the public that don't know, they were working on reconciling twenty-four and closing that out through an audit, controlling spend and drawing down the deficit for F Y twenty-five, developing F Y twenty-six budget that will be presented next week publicly on Thursday, the seventeenth, developing a five-year forecast or financial plan to a deficit reduction plan, all of that while being short-staffed. Everybody was just jumping in, building up the team, so I can't thank you guys enough for everything that you've done. I really appreciate it. With regards to the five-year plan, deficit reduction plan, I just want to, for the public's knowledge, I did see in the Warwick Beacon, there was a letter to the editor, an individual said, I can't believe that they would pass this plan and, you know, plan on, you know, driving up spend for five years each year. It's important to note that the plan at this time is a draft. The school department, as requested by the Auditor General, was asked to put together a plan of how you become solvent, how you have a balanced budget. What does that look like? Things can change. It's going to evolve year after year. And right now, we've put that plan together, or more so, the school department has put that plan together on the basis of today, but as we just heard my colleague down the end of the table, each day, costs become more and more clear, so the number, our starting point for twenty-six could be lower than what we're anticipating, which means then every fiscal year thereafter adjusts. You'll notice on the agenda for this evening, there's one of our creative thoughts right now that we're evaluating, and that's the closure of the Gorton Administrative Building and putting these central administrative functions into a leased space, so we can have a controlled fixed cost versus all of these variable costs and unplanned expenditures. So that's going to help us with better planning as the years go on. So there's going to be a lot of these initiatives throughout the next twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months that provide us an opportunity to continue to modify that plan as it goes forward. But right now, that is a draft. Nothing's been set in stone, and then that gets me into my last comment here. Effective as of last week, and I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Hennius here in a second for a couple of questions, the Warwick Public Schools Budget Commission came into effect. So there's two sunset provisions within that legislation. One of them is passage of the F Y twenty-six budget. The second one is passage and approval of the five-year deficit reduction plan. So nobody before me from the administration or up here on this stage actually is going to approve that plan. That plan is going to be approved per the legislation by that commission. That is why they're being brought on, you know, these experts, to address the deficit situation and evaluate how we can better control costs. So I just wanted to address that five-year plan, nothing is set in stone at this moment. It was a draft. It's being publicly discussed, and so I just asked the public to work with us here as we continue to navigate this, and we're certainly definitely in unprecedented times, given the size of the deficit and also the fact that we've got this brand-new legislation. So for my colleagues' benefits and the public's benefit, I'm going to ask Attorney Hennius a few questions because none of us up here are lawyers. Mr. Wiggins is probably the closest thing to it, and, you know, and he passed a bar or two on the way here. So I'm going to ask a few questions to Attorney Hennius, just because we need to operate off of legal counsel's opinion on this particular matter. So Attorney Hennius, the legislation became in effect when?
I believe it was Friday.
Okay, so now the Budget Commission that we've discussed for the past several months is in play. Based on that legislation, are any individuals before me or on this stage authorized to release even a single dollar?
No, in my opinion, from that day forward, all expenditures of your school department must be approved by the Budget Commission.
Okay. And could you just elaborate, just so that way the general public is aware, as well as my colleagues, particularly what funds are covered within that legislation? We know there's the exemption, correct, for bond-related items such as construction. That wouldn't be captured within the legislation, but in terms of what costs can this body continue to approve and the administration act on, and what costs are there that this body basically just gives its honorary, we support this, but the authorization would then come from the Budget Commission?
It's all appropriations, allocations, and expenditures. So that would be virtually everything that comes before this body that requires money, whether it's payroll, whether it's purchasing, whatever that is. You know, my suggestion to this body has been to continue to operate as you would, receive the information from the administration, either approve or deny the request. If the request is approved, that then gets forward to the Budget Commission, and they'll, you know, ultimately make the decision. you know, ultimately make the decision.
So then the expenditures, after it leaves here, should not be acted upon by, if passed, they should not be acted upon by the administration until it goes to that next level of approval?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, it's all expenditures affiliated with our general operating budget?
Correct.
So exempt from that would be everything coming out of the Capitol and Construction Office?
Correct. There is a carve-out for the bond and the capital improvements.
So the items presented to us tonight for discussion action from Left Field, Mr. Goethberg, those would be items that would be acted on immediately tonight after passage?
That is correct. The exact language is, "The Budget Commission does not have authority over things that impact projects funded by bond proceeds or make any decisions related thereto, including but not limited to construction of new high schools." So those issues would not go to the bond, to the, excuse me, to the Budget Commission, but everything else will.
Okay. And Mr. Crowley, are you clear with the new legislation in place that, of who the business office is going to be sending the expenditures onto at this time until the mayoral-appointed members are confirmed by the City Council?
Anything that we are required to do by the law, we will do.
Correct. So we'll be forwarding those to the Finance Director for the City of Warwick until such time as all the correct people are appointed.
Fantastic. And then there was one question that was brought forward with regards to the FY '26 budget. After it comes before this body next week, it then goes to whom?
It's a great question. It's my opinion that once this body approves the budget, whatever budget it approves, it will be forwarded to the city. And my belief is that that would then go to the Budget Commission. The Budget Commission can adopt your proposed budget. They can make changes to that budget. That would be on them. And then whatever budget they officially pass would then go to the city.
Okay. And so my last question, it's a question but an ask, but I would just ask the superintendent, yourself and Mr. Crowley, if you could please, in advance of the budget hearing next week, if we could have a clear understanding of the path of the budget, just so that way we have an, from start to finish, all the way out to June. Like if the City Council and the mayor fund us to a certain extent, and we need to balance that budget, does it come back to us via the Budget Commission, or does it come to us immediately then to the Budget Commission then too?
So I will, I will work with the mayor's attorney and the City Council's attorney, but I can tell you what my read of the language is, is you will pass a budget, and then it will go to the Budget Commission. The Budget Commission will do whatever it does, whether it's approve that, whether it's make additional cuts. I don't believe they would send it back to this body because you've already passed your budget. The Budget Commission will do whatever the Budget Commission does, and then they will bring that to the City Council for approval.
Thank you. Are there any, Mr. Testa?
One question asked of Mr. Hennius. I know the legislation says any and all expenditures, so that even includes Title I funds and title funds, right?
Arguably.
Right? Which, on the surface, to me, would seem ridiculous because they're title funds, and there's restrictions on how you can spend it. I understand the legislation.
And I think how it will actually work, Mr. Testa, is the Budget Commission will understand that presumably. They'll understand how that process works. I don't want to call it a rubber stamp, but that'll be something they'll, they'll get that information, they'll understand it's grant-funded, they'll understand it's Title I funded, and pass that through, is my assumption.
Right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for members of this committee concerning FY '25, monthly financial report, the year-end review, and spend for the remainder of this meeting? Nope. Okay. Next item, discussion update interim, actually, before I move it, are there any questions from members of the administration based on what was just stated? Ms. Kusno?
I think just to echo what Mr. Testa said, we were wondering about type-bond things, federal monies, things like that. So to get clarification, I think, would help all of us as well.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McCaffrey.
In that legislation, there's also a piece about an approved five-year deficit reduction plan. How does that fit into the planning for the FY '26 budget? Does that have implications on the work of the Budget Commission? Does the Auditor General's approval of a five-year plan supersede the work of the Budget Commission, or vice versa?
I turn that over to council.
Yeah, I mean, that ultimately, the Auditor General, as dictated in the legislation, it's got to be a jointly agreed-upon plan, and it's got to be approved by the Auditor General. So I believe the Auditor General has the final say. Upon the Auditor General's say, that Budget Commission would cease to exist.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, funny jokes? Got a couple. Next item, discussion update interim superintendent update, Mr. McCaffrey.
Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, I've had the opportunity in the last two weeks to visit all of our schools except for one. I have to say, it's the best part of my day. You get to realize why you do what you do and what you do it for, seeing the kids, seeing the professional staff, seeing our administrative teams out there. They're all hard at work and great things are happening. At Warwick Neck, you get the joke of the day by the principal. Sometimes they're a little bit corny, but the kids love it. At Norwood, they've initiated a program with the walking school bus where a staff member goes out to the different students that walk to school, and they work, they walk on a route as a group, and it's really nice that the staff members get to see the community, know where the kids are coming from. It's very positive. Lastly, I would have to say, Mr. McCoombs should have been the dancing cop in Providence. The way that he directs traffic at Hoxsey, it's amazing. He gets the cars in and out of there, and he knows everyone that's coming and going. So hats off to Mr. McCoombs. I know we have a large agenda, so I want to keep my comments brief, but I would say the, one of the highlights was attending the Unified Basketball Tournament at Hendrickson. It was amazing. Warwick Avenue was shut down, Oakland Beach Avenue was shut down, and it's probably the best crowd I've ever seen on that campus, including Thanksgiving Day football games when there's a huge rivalry, when there used to be a huge rivalry between Hendrickson and Tollgate. So very impressive event, and that's what I have to report this month. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. McCaffrey? Seeing none, we are on to discussion update, cost analysis, Gorton Administrative move.
In your folders, you'll find information regarding the operating expenses for Gorton in the Green Building, as well as you'll find some data related to capital improvements needed in the next few years for these facilities. And finally, you'll see different lease terms and some additional considerations in the event the school committee decided to move our central office to an off-site location and lease commercial space in the City of Warwick. These numbers are based upon information from commercial brokers within the Warwick community, and it's a forecast and a snapshot. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. First and foremost, I want to thank you and the administrative team for, while you were doing all those other financial actions, taking on this evaluation. I also want to thank my colleagues for supporting the initiative last month. And I think it shows good faith to the community that we're going to slowly start to look at how we operate as a district and start to evaluate different ways that we can kind of be a little bit more lean, operate a little bit more efficiently, and be a little bit more cost-effective. In a second here, I'm going to make a motion, but what I would be looking for essentially is the operating expenses, how you broke it down with Gorton and Green, that's great. I would just, I would want to remove phone, copiers, access point licenses for internet, and, yeah, that'd be those three, because even if you go into a leased space, you're probably going to still have to pay for phones, copiers, and internet. So we're capturing it right now as a cost associated with operating in these two buildings, which is good, but it's also going to be a cost that's going to transition over to the leased space. The next comment I would have is you did a great job of kind of pointing out additional considerations. One thing I know is we are using Gorton also for storage, so.
Correct.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Correct.
So I would just want to know, you know, if we're looking at, hey, we're going to go and lease a space, a commercial space, on the low end at a cost of $680,000, well then I would want to know what, what in addition to that is there, plus, you know, all the plus-plus-pluses. So if we're going to reshape how we operate as a district, and we've got storage costs elsewhere, maybe we're renting 10,000 square feet at a local warehouse, or maybe, you know, it's personnel files with HR, and it's going to go to Iron Mountain, they're higher cost. I would just want to know what are any other costs that would be associated with it? That would be good. Now that we have a full committee back, I do think that this is worth us continuing to explore, for the reason that we'll have a fixed cost. I know Ms. Neko brought up the, you know, the conveyances and how the building is deeded, and that's totally fine, but let's remember Aldrich was also deeded a certain way, and they, you know, the city was able to work through that. What we need to focus on at this time in Warwick Public Schools history is, what does the future of this organization look like to be able to deliver high-quality education to our students while being fiscally responsible with taxpayer money? So if we have to vacate that facility and leave that property to the city for them to kind of work through and navigate, then so be it. Otherwise, we're going to continue to go back to the city for significant or substantial volumes of money for our general operating budget, because, you know, just for the public's knowledge, we're spending at Gorton, just Gorton alone, $100,000 on fuel oil a year. After Holloman vacates that property, Holloman, the only individuals that will be within that building will be central administration. I know that there's talks about where we might relocate the transition program that's currently over at Pilgrim. I know that we've, you know, Ms. Neko noted the tremendous growth of young adolescents coming into the district over at Welk, and that we're going to need to evaluate that. Yes, absolutely. That's why I think we move to further study this and continue to figure out what is the long-term vision for the district, where do central administrative offices sit, storage of materials. But, you know, I'm looking at these numbers, and it's not an energy-efficient building. It's a very large facility. I would compare it to parents having, I don't, I don't know this, maybe Mr. Testa and Ms. Hazelwood especially, empty nesters. All the kids leave the house. Do you still need that large of a house, or can you downsize and find something a little bit more fiscally responsible? So I'm just looking at the costs associated with all of this, and it's an old building. It's going to require a new roof. You know, which administration is estimating at $2.5 million. There's going to be sewer tie-in for the two buildings, estimated at close to $200,000. A new boiler at half a million dollars. So we've got a capital investment of $3.1 million we're looking at that needs to be made sooner than later, and I don't know if Mr. Testa and his building committee have really much left in Phase 1 and 2 bonds, and what they do have, they've already eyed up those projects. So we've, we're at a fork in the road, and we need to determine what we're going to do. But, so I'm going to make a motion, if my colleagues would entertain it, to request that the administration further study this and continue to refine these costs. So that's the motion I would make, requesting further evaluation with a follow-up presentation at the May School Committee meeting. Made by Ms. Hazelwood.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Yep, Mr. Testa, go ahead.
This agenda item was just the discussion update. So, Mr. Hennius, can we, right? But I think, yeah, I don't think it's an action item, but I think we can request that of the administration to do that. You know, one thing I would add to your comments, as far as the capital improvements at Gorton, they're not, in the grand scheme of things, they're not that big, but this is a city-owned building too. So maybe there's a novel approach when it comes time to do this where it doesn't come out of the school department because it's a city-owned building. I think that's, you know, as we investigate it further, I think it's a conversation worth having with the city to see if, you know, the sewer, the sewer tie-in, you know, do we have to be on the hook for that? Do we have to be on the hook for a boiler? Or maybe there's a way to split costs. But I agree with your sentiment to explore it a little further. I'm not quite sure I'm convinced that it's going to be cheaper to go elsewhere, but let's let them further explore it and see where it leads us.
Great, thank you. And good catch. Attorney Hennius said that we could just direct the administration, so I kindly ask that you please continue to explore it and beat it up and refine those costs and determine if this is a viable option for us, because the numbers are getting pretty close there as to what we're paying annually to be in a facility with a significant volume of risk, and, you know, what we could possibly pay to be in a facility where we don't have to worry about anything associated with the structure and the utilities. Are there any other comments regarding, Mr. Wiggins?
No, just to follow up on what Mr. Testa said, I agree that we should be working with. What are you doing? But as far as working with the city, right, so I think that's a great exploratory next step as we go further into this, because obviously, they're on the hook for the building, and they may, to Mr. Testa's point, be able to help some of the expenditures and we have space, so.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Cool. I'll just close out with, I just want to clarify, I'm not looking to stick the city with the problem. I just believe they have the resources available to them to help them navigate the, you know, how that land is deeded and the building is deeded, and, you know, they did a great job with getting creative with the sale of the Aldrich Building that will now generate some tax revenue for the city. So, you know, if it makes sense for both parties, but absolutely, I think we should get creative and look at it. Maybe it's, maybe we share the building, the use of the building, and they help us renovate it. So there's a lot, there's a lot to consider here, and I just ask that we continue to look into it, so. Any other comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. We are now on to item six, discussion update, capital and construction projects update, Mr. Goethberg.
Good evening, Chairman Gallagher and committee members. This will be quick tonight. At Oakland Beach, all we have left is the work area in the front of the building to get cleaned up and seeded, raked out. To spruce that up over at the Green Building, we will finish up the exterior painting that's warmed up enough, so that's going to be done next week. At Warwick Neck, the exterior punch list items should be completed next week during vacation. At Greenwood, because of the impact to classrooms, we waited on the final punch list items, and they'll be completed next week during vacation. At Holloman, windows are 100% completed, the ceiling grid is up, and 90% of the building, flooring is at least 30% installed. The building is now connected to the new power, the new transformer, the new switchgear. Rooftop top unit startups are near completion, and the interior VRF units shall be started beginning next week, and we are still well ahead of schedule. Scott Septic, we are waiting for a response from the owners of the adjacent property to determine in what direction we must go to solve that problem. Mr. Hennius and I have discussed it on numerous occasions. We're looking to get a little more aggressive in our approach, I believe. Summer projects, bids have been received, and they'll be coming up in a couple of items on the agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Goethberg? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goethberg. Next item on the agenda, number seven, discussion update, high school project update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Chris Spiegel, project executive with Left Field Project Management. Not the most substantial update today because we met just two weeks ago to approve the first of the early release packages. We will be coming before you tonight with a fourth early release package for the Pilgrim project. I'm happy to report that this is the fourth package that has come in under budget in a row. We continue to trend in the right direction in terms of cost. We continue to trend in the right direction in terms of costs at the Pilgrim School and will be receiving bids back on the Tollgate School the next couple of weeks. Additional reporting is that we, as part of this project, as I'd mentioned in many meetings when we talk about our contingency usage, we are going to be requesting later our first drawdown in our contingency. In this case, it's for unsuitable soils, as we had talked about multiple times throughout the project. Left Field, Dimeo, Steve Gothberg, were not comfortable releasing contingency back into the project until we had a better grasp of our soil conditions, including ledge and other unsuitable soils throughout the project. This will be our first request to drawdown of that contingency. Again, this is contingency that will be tracked separately and we'll be providing a regular update on the usage of this contingency within your project report that you all get monthly from our office. We will be coordinating with the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management on the treatment and the remediation of any unsuitable soils that we find. We're working with them right now. In the next few weeks, you will probably see a notice in the paper about us holding in a butters meeting. This is typical of this process. I've had one of these on every single project that I've done here in Rhode Island. Pretty boilerplate in terms of what the notice will look like, but we'll of course provide an advanced copy to the school committee for their approval. And then the exciting stuff gets to happen. We will be looking at scheduling at our next meeting, a official groundbreaking ceremony for the Pilgrim project. And I will also be holding a website kickoff meeting the week after school vacation break and we, with Chairman Testa, interim superintendent McCaffrey or his designated representative, Mr. Gothberg and myself, to get some advanced work done on this website. It has been brought to our attention that now that we're moving into construction, it would really benefit the community if we had a much more robust website up there. So you're going to start to see logistical plans and expanded frequently asked questions page. However, I would like to say the website has been used. We're getting approximately between three and four unique visitors every single day and we have responded to approximately nine questions from the public, some of them which were very detailed in nature. That's my project update for today and I'll be back in a few minutes to share the soil, excuse me, the, the early release packages for site work as well as a package of release for general conditions. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Spiegel? Mr. Testa?
Do I have one? The unsuitable soils, you're going to deal with that with the site package?
Yes, we'll be dealing with that with the site package.
You're going to explain that to everybody?
Yes, that is a, to drawdown our contingency. It's a separate from our hard cost construction budget.
Just want to make sure that everybody's brought to speed.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. We are now to item eight, discussion action, approval for a variance to ride, section one dot zero five dash nine seven, section seven. I'm looking for a motion to move approval made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Testa. Please go ahead and present it to us, Mr. Bates.
Good evening. So this is pertaining to the Pilgrim High School site design. This is a regulation stating that bus loading and unloading processes should be designed to avoid the buses lining up head to tail. This is adopted from the New England Collaborative High Performance Schools Program with the intent being to limit student exposure to bus engine exhaust building up along that curb. But to comply with that regulation, that would meet including a Chevron-style bus parking layout to accommodate the area needed for that. Chevron bus parking would require another roughly 40,000 square feet of impervious asphalt. That would mean less parking availability. That would mean less green area. It would put strain on our stormwater management on site and students would need to cross a bus travel lane to get to the buses parked in that Chevron lot on the other side of that bus travel lane, causing some, or creating a hazard. So one thing to remember, as you folks know, is the school has a no idling policy already in place. So in our case, the buses would have their engines off during the loading/unloading process. Therefore, we've already addressed the exhaust exposure issue of that head-to-tail positioning. We're currently, by the way, proposing the head-to-tail positioning for bus drop-off and pickup. So it's the recommendation of the design and engineering team to seek a variance from this regulation and seek a variance from the Chevron parking and proceed as currently designed where the buses line up head to tail. And RIDE has reviewed and approved this site layout and so their only requirement would be that this committee also approves.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bates? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are now on to item nine, discussion action, bid award, bid number twenty-five dash zero zero one five, exterior door upgrades at Hoxie, Robertson and Wyman, looking for a motion to move approval. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins and it is presented by Mr. Gothberg.
First bid package was for three schools and they were, excuse me, Hoxie, Robertson and Wyman. Low bidder was ADS for each school individually and the total package, the total package was 685,000. Next bidder was Merritt Construction. They were in total package at 815,620,000. And high bidder was Alborg, which was 934,000. So we seek your approval to go ahead for ADS. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gothberg? Mr. Testa?
Thank you. Mr. Gothberg, why were these three schools lumped together?
Because Cedar Hill and Park are similar schools and we wanted to package them together. Their design is almost identical except for the addition, so I asked that those two be held separately and bring the other two together. And we did them all individually, hoping that, you know, we might be able to get some lower bids accordingly, but ADS was low on all of them. They seem to be very hungry for this.
And we've used ADS before?
Yeah, we used them at Greenwood and Norwood and they did a very, very good job.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the committee? Look at that. Miss Kirby Chavon, you're getting new doors over there in District Three. That's nice, huh?
Yeah, I got to protect my baby.
Okay. Seeing there's no other questions or comments for Mr. Gothberg, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're now on to item number ten, discussion action, bid award, bid number two-five dash zero zero one six, exterior door upgrades at Cedar Hill and Park, looking for a motion to move approval. Made by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins, seconded by Mr. Testa. Mr. Gothberg?
As we stated before, Cedar Hill and Park are very similar in design, almost exactly. So we packaged them together. Again, ADS was low, their bid, they were low individually and in total, the total was 572,000. Again, Merritt Construction was second place. They were at 617,069 and Alborg was high at 699,000. So seek your approval to move ahead with ADS on both these schools. They have confirmed that they have the manpower and some contracts available to do all five projects, so I'm confident they can handle the work.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gothberg on this item? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gothberg. Next we have item eleven, discussion action, approval of Drum Rock Demolition Project Submission to Ride as presented by Left Field. I'm looking for a motion to move approval. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Left Field?
Again, hello everyone or good evening, everyone. Before you tonight, we are requesting permission of this group to submit the Drum Rock Demolition Project Submission to the Rhode Island Department of Education. As you all are aware, this is the first piece of work that needs to happen over there on that site. By submitting this package to the Rhode Island Department of Education, we can get this work underway very, very quickly. We're seeking your approval tonight to do just that. This will allow the project to remain on schedule because we can get our crews in there and get them working on that prior to the other work starting. We seek your approval and if there's any questions, myself or my colleague John Bates, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from members of the committee? The only question I have, Mr. Spiegel, so you're going to ride and you're asking them, hey, can you give us permission and knock down this building on the site where we're going to be constructing a new school? There's essentially going to be a second approval request coming from this committee, correct? Where it would be, this is the vendor whom we selected, this is going to be the cost, here's what we budgeted, right?
Just like we've been doing with the other packages, correct?
Great. Any other questions from members of the committee? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, item twelve, discussion, discussion action, approval of Dimeo general conditions, excuse me, approval of Pilgrim's early bid site package, looking for a motion to move approval. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Left Field?
Good evening again. Today before you, we have Dimeo project number seven six oh dash two four, recommendation to award number four. This is for site work at the Pilgrim package. Again, this is another one of the biggest packages that we're going to be awarding. This package also, as it terms with site work, also does carry the biggest risks, so we have included a number of allowances to mitigate those risks and protect the project against change orders. We can go through those in a second. In terms of, we had four companies bid on the work, Manafort Brothers, Giorgio, DeFernzo and Farrar Construction. The low bid was Manafort Brothers at a base amount of 12,009,700. I have personally worked with Manafort. They've done a number of school projects. They're a great firm to work with. We've also included the following allowances as part of this base work. Snow removal, removal and disposable unidentified utilities, loam seed, excavation and backfill of underslaved utilities, excavation and backfill of the radon system that was previously approved by this group. There's a number on here, I don't need to go through every single one of them, but essentially what these allowances do is they serve the purpose of us looking at risks on the project and allocating money to those risks so that we carefully manage your budget to protect you against change orders. When you include all of those allowances and the hold, you're looking at a subtotal of That is your hard cost total for this work that is under the budget that we developed at 16,240,000 by approximately $718,000. That means that of the four site work packages that we have, or the four packages we have awarded to date, you're looking at a total under budget of approximately $1.8 million. The second number that you see here, the $18,413,000, is a request for us to add additional allowances directly related to the unsuitable soils that I spoke about previously in the project report. As we mentioned, this project did find suitable soils that we are going to have to address as part of our work moving forward. The exact extent of those remediation efforts are currently unknown. We are still working with the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. They have a lot on their plate. But in order for this work to move forward and on schedule, we have prepared a worst-case scenario. Now, this is such a worst-case scenario that we're actually talking about removing six inches of soil across the entire site. This is an import site, meaning that currently the design requires no additional soil to be removed from the site to make it work. So this is a substantial, I don't want to say overreaction, but it's us showing our colors again and being as conservative as possible in our awarding of allowances to make sure that we protect the owner against any unsuitable, any additional costs. So we are looking tonight for a total award of $18,413,231,000. The difference between the $15 million number and the $18 million, again, will be an allowance that is tracked. That's not a signed cost, it's an allowance. As those costs come in, we will build towards it and that money will be coming out of our $17.1 million contingency, which as we've been saying at these meetings, was specifically for unsuitable soils, ledge, other items like that, that we did not have the information for at the time. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. One thing I did want to point out is if you, continuing further in the project, you'll notice that we have also developed a number of unit prices. This is our way of holding the subcontractor honest with their numbers. We ask them to bid on unit prices upfront so that we understand how much we can be charging to the allowances as opposed to lump some costs as we move forward through the project. So happy to answer any additional questions on this. As an overview again, so the original ask we made back in September, we said we were approximately 23 million was the ask of the city. With these four packages now, we are, our ask is about 21.2. So moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the committee or comments? Mr. Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Spiegel, can you just share a little bit of the unsuitable soils at Pilgrim and why?
Sure.
Just a little bit of the, just a little bit of the information of what was found?
So sure. So the majority of the site, everything turned out just great, exactly what we needed. In a few select areas, we found what are called PAHs. PAHs are a result of partially combusted petroleum products predominantly. So things like car exhaust. If you have a fire pit in your backyard, PAHs from partially burned wood. PAHs can even be found in our food, those char marks when you grill a hamburger, those are technically PHs as well. They're very common within soils in Rhode Island and elsewhere. We have them on every project that I've ever worked on pretty much. Nothing to be concerned about. They are currently capped by existing soil. With that being said, we'd like to just remediate them now as part of this project as opposed to, you know, leaving them in the soil. In most cases, you'll find them, it's the result of, you can see where there's runoff areas, where runoff accumulates after rain and it drains onto the site. You see them there. And a couple other areas, it looks like it was the result of them building up certain sections of the site when they built the site up. So those were the, that was the primary one. We also found in a few spots arsenic. Arsenic is common in Rhode Island soils. Rhode Island actually has the lowest tolerance for arsenic in soils at only seven parts per, I believe it's parts per million, don't quote me on that exactly. With that being said, the federal standard is 150 and Massachusetts, our neighbor to the north, their standard is approximately 30. So these were all under the Massachusetts standard and again, it's very common in soils in Rhode Island, does not pose any immediate threat.
And so further work has to be done to determine the full extent of it and that would lead you into what the remediation process is going to be. So of that contingency, we may not use it all. We may use a portion of it.
Yeah, we, so as I said, this is, this assumes that we'd have to remove six inches of soil from almost the entire site. We only found these hits in approximately, I think, 30% of the wells that we tested. We had over 50 wells or ground testing parts on site, so, you know, it's not something that we're concerned about, but again, to protect the owner, we want to make these allocations now so that they are allocated as part of our budget and we can remediate any issue that comes up.
Right, and two more things. And I think you explained at the building committee meeting that in the core samples where you found it, it looks like fill was brought in 60 years ago when they were building the site. So it's just contained to that top and you can see it in the striations of the core.
That's what all of our evidence, we have pictures of all of the core samples that we took. Again, it does look like that's the case in some areas, that when they were building up certain sections of the site, they brought in fill to build up the site. It looks like that fill might have been contaminated. Just for reference, this is exactly what happened in Barrington where I live. This exact same issue was found there at my daughter's school, my daughter, in the playground area. And the same thing, it was a quick remediation, RIDE DEM letter. I let my daughter play in that playground.
And the last, lastly is the process, DEM's process is, I think it's a 10-day, it's a 10-day and a 20-day.
Yeah, it's the notification periods, yeah, it's all enshrined in statute.
Right, so this could delay it a little bit because we have to tick off all of those days.
Yeah, before we move any dirt, it's, we're not too concerned about that right now as long as everything keeps moving forward. On the same time, remember, we still have a few weeks of site work to do in terms of getting the site safe, putting up our fencing, getting our trailers, all of that sort of stuff on site that gives us some time, some float, I should say. Again, this is, it's common. Everywhere I've worked, we run into this. It's just natural part of the soils down here in Rhode Island, in developed areas such as Barrington, Warwick, North Providence.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel.
Anyone else? Anyone who want to go out for burgers with char marks on this app? Thanks for killing that, Mr. Spiegel.
I got a grill in my backyard, too.
All those in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir. Next we have item 13, discussion action, approval of Dimeo general conditions initial release as presented by Left Field, looking for a motion to move approval. Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Bates, if you'd like to present.
Good evening again. As we look to start mobilizing on site and to move from the pre-construction phase into the construction phase of services, Dimeo is going to need to start billing for those construction services and for the materials and for various payments and fees. So what they are proposing is to add the total bid values of the scope packages that have been approved to date. That's for concrete, steel, elevator and site. As a percentage of the... Uh, that's for concrete, steel, elevator and site, uh, as a percentage of the overall project cost estimate. So that would be a total of 22%. Thirty-two million, six, thirty-two six would be the, uh, the, the number value, 22% would be the, the percentage value. And that would, uh, and so that would pay for roughly seven to eight months of construction, personnel services, equipment, insurance and permitting fees. So what this vote would be doing is authorizing, uh, DMEO to invoice against 3.7 million dollars as a partial release of the general conditions and general requirements. Again, to enable them to start spending some money to, to continue into construction.
Any questions from Mr. Bates? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Bates. We are on to, um, the bulk of our meeting here. The expenditures, again, just a reminder to the administration, uh, this is more just an honorary motion by the school committee here. We're memorializing our support of these expenses. But, uh, after us, there is another level of approval now. I jokingly stated earlier, it's kind of like telling my kids, yes, they could do something, but they still need to get permission from mom. So that's what's, that's what this exercise is here. At this time, uh, item 14, discussion, action, change order, next-gen supply group, number I'm looking for a motion to move approval to the City of Warwick and the Budget Commission for authorization. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item, discussion, action, contract award, Delta Mechanical, number 21812. Looking for a motion to move approval for authorization by the City of Warwick and the Budget Commission. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Testa and Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, number 16, discussion, action, contract award, Warner Specialty, number 21722. Looking for a motion to move approval to the City of Warwick and Budget Commission for authorization. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next item, item number 17, discussion, action, contract award, Xerox CBS multi-function device lease renewal, looking for a motion to move approval and receive authorization from the City of Warwick and the Budget Commission. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Testa. Any discussion? Mr. Testa?
Thank you. Dr. Taylor? And let's see, this is, this is the same company we've been using for a while, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, and this is, this is $9,150 a month, and you said as part of it, this plan will address the issue of aging machines. So we're just paying 9150 a month and machines will get replaced in due process.
Absolutely, yeah. This is a, a little bit of a, a unique, um, request because we already have an open, PO that was approved back in June, and it's for 9150 per month for a CBS Xerox. We're having an issue, as is expected, with machines being end of life, and we know that really the morale of buildings oftentimes ebb and flow based on the reliability of copying machines, um, that we need to look to replace these broken and, and end of life machines. So the uniqueness is we already have an approved payment that would even, and this would be a question even for Attorney Heneas and the Budget Commission and so forth, because we have an approved payment to pay 9150 a month, and we have to do that anyway through the lease, which as on the memo mentions January 19th, 2026, or we can pay 9150 a month, the exact same amount of money that's already been previously approved, and bring in new copying machines to replace those aged machines at 0.0 increase cost to the district. So it's, it's kind of a unique situation where we could do nothing and pay the 9150 or do something and pay the 9150 that's already been approved. But we're here before you tonight because in order to maintain that price, we need to re-lease those additional machines that would replace the machines. So that's a longer-term commitment, and so that's what makes it, um, a little bit more approval worthy, um, because, you know, our future selves in, uh, 2026 and 2027 and 2028 are going to be paying the, the bill for those machines.
Okay, yeah, because I don't think anybody, um, would realistically expect us to purchase copying machines. I think that's, that's, uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other members of the committee with questions?
I had just one that, um, just from my colleagues' knowledge, Dr. Taylor was kind enough to provide, um, a little input into. I was just questioning why this, something like this wouldn't go out to competitive bid, uh, competitive bid. But Dr. Taylor assured me that because this is going through the, uh, the MPA process that, uh, they were able to, um, get us to fair and competitive pricing, um, and it's transparent. So, uh, I felt very comfortable after receiving that.
And, and to, just to add to that, um, you know, there's very few purchases that even our purchasing department recommends strongly that we really use the MPA, and it's especially in something like this where if we went out to bid, um, we would be looking for the same, uh, company anyway, because half of the fleet would be Xerox and another half of the fleet, if we change companies, we'd be running two different platforms as a district, um, because this replaces a chunk of the machines, but the other machines that are still servicing well, and they're going to be good for the next four years, we don't want two different machine types, brands and platforms. So the MPAs utilize exactly for this purpose, uh, to continue that partnership with the same technology that we have in place.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Any other questions, comments for Dr. Taylor? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, to just, I did, I did have, uh, Mr. Contagious from Xerox and CBS here and Mr. Napolillo of that state. I just thank them for being here tonight. In case you did have any questions, they were ready to answer them.
Thank you, and we'd like to thank them for being present tonight. Thank you both. Next item, item 18, discussion, action, contract award, Cartwheel Mental Health Partnership, number 21723. I'm looking for a motion to move approval and receive authorization from the City of Warwick and/or the Budget Commission. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Testa. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Testa?
Thank you. Ms. Murray, it says we're requesting to purchase an additional 25 seats. So how many total seats do we have?
So back in June, when I came before you, we started low and conservatively with 50 seats. So we're doing another 25 that will get us through this contract, and right now we are at 94% utilized in our current contract. So it's been very successful.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Murray? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Colleagues, I'm looking for you, uh, your approval for us to take items 19 through 29, all grant-funded expenditures and all requested by our Director of Curriculum, Dr. Schultz. Anyone object to me getting ready to read these out, all individuals?
Move approval.
Oh, there we go. I'm looking for a motion to move approval to seek authorization from the City of Warwick and/or the Budget Commission. Made by Mr. Testa.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Hazelwood. On item 19, discussion, action, contract award, Amazon, number 21838. Contract award, Demco Inc., number 21642. Contract award, The Math Learning Center, number 21788. Contract award, U.S. Math Recovery Council, number 21657. Contract award, U.S. Math Recovery Council, number 21814. Contract award, Wilson Language Training, number 21818. Contract award, Wilson Language Training, number 21821. Contract award, Just Write Reader, number 21708. Contract award, Mini Entrepreneurs, number 21804. Contract award, Hand to Mine, number 21828. And contract award, Throughline Learning, number 21826. Are there any comments for Dr. Schultz on any of these particular ones? Dr., uh, Doctor Testa? Doctor Testa?
No, that'll never happen, I can assure you of that. Okay, just a couple of questions. 21642, Demco Oakland Beach Elementary School, is that a Title I funded expenditure? Because the other ones were.
No, that's a great question. That's actually from the arts grant that was granted to us.
Answer my question, thank you. 21818, Wilson Language Training, there's two. There's Wilson Language Training, 21818, and then 21821. 21821 says it's for Lipit. 21818, it doesn't list schools, so was that for?
This is for Norwood.
This was Norwood?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. And then 21804, Mini Entrepreneurs. One program has 12 seats, one has 15. How do the students get selected for that?
Um, as, all that I know right now, and I'll have to get back to you on it, is that it's for after-school program for hands-on STEAM activities at Lipit. So it might be for two separate programs, but I'll have to get back to you.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I know there's more than, one of them is grades four and five, one's three through five, so, okay? That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Dr. Schultz? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes items 19 to 29. Did you get that, Mr. Tedeschi? Fantastic. Item number 30, looking for a motion to move approval, um, to the City of Warwick and/or Budget Commission for authorization of curriculum, uh, excuse me, actually, no. Scratch that. Looking for a motion to move approval, discussion, action, curriculum approvals, modern world language, levels one through four.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa. Seconded by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're on to item 31, uh, looking for a motion to move approval, discussion, action, Warwick School Committee Transportation Resolution. Made by Mr. Wiggins, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood. Any discussion? I would just note, um, we are joining the likes of Bristol Warren, Middletown, North Kingston, Cumberland, Burrville, North, North Smithfield, Windsoc, Coventry and Exeter, West Greenwich, uh, all school committees that have also passed a similar resolution in support of, uh, the House bills that are going through at this time. And I believe, Mr. Testa, correct me if I'm wrong, it, there's the possibility that it presents between a $600,000 to $900,000 savings with just the defin-, uh, terminology differences, uh, or the definitions.
I, I think you're right.
Thank you. So again, we talk about that five-year forecast and all of these changes and everything else that we can try to control or manipulate. This is another opportunity for us, again, to continue to work that number down and, and address, uh, future years, so. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. Ms. Kirby Chapman, I'm going to need your signature on that resolution. Uh, the next is, uh, item 32, looking for a motion to move approval, uh, discussion, action, Warwick School Committee Athletic Cooperatives Resolution. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Uh, I just, I've docketed this resolution. I would appreciate the support of my colleagues. It's, it's basically asking, uh, or directing the, um, administration to evaluate, uh, doing co-ops internal to our school districts first, prior to, um, entertaining co-ops outside of our school district, uh, just to enhance, you know, kind of, uh, community pride, uh, bridging the gap between the north and the south sides of the city. Um, this would require that, uh, the school's principal, the school athletic director, the district's athletic director and the superintendent are all in agreement with, uh, with the co-op. Any other comments for members of the committee on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, the next item, I'm looking for a motion to move approval, discussion, action, amended school committee 2025 monthly meeting calendar. Made by Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? For the public's knowledge, we added our budget hearing for Thursday, April 17th at 5:30 PM right here at Warwick Veterans, and we also modified our, um, April, uh, excuse me, August meeting. Uh, the meeting was initially scheduled for the 12th, and we moved that out, um, to the 19th. Same date, uh, same time, same place. So any other comments from members of the committee? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are now on to public comment. Individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person, with public comment not to exceed 45 minutes, though the content of comments will not be restricted. It is the hope of this committee that citizens, committee members and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for general comments or concerns. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record. Again, using the podium to my left, you're right.
Hello, Darlene Netco. One of my colleagues had asked me today, um, if there was going to be a groundbreaking ceremony for Pilgrim and then, uh, Tollgate, and so I was pleased to hear earlier that obviously there would be. We need to celebrate, uh, these new schools, um, that ceremonial first shovel in the ground, so hopefully they'll be well-publicized so anyone who wants to attend can attend. And then for my next comment, I would like to, um, I forgot to do my usual introduction, homeowner, taxpayer, lifelong resident of Warwick and so on. Um, and I'd like to comment about this, um, Warwick Public Schools Budget Commission that has become law. And, um, it was rushed through at all levels because it was so important, and now isn't it fascinating, uh, that the city side is not appointing anyone until, um, April 21st, I believe, uh, is the date right now? So that means our school committee tonight had to, um, make these, uh, approved, uh, budget item purchases, even grant-funded items, and add that extra line, um, with the approval of the Budget Commission, which currently doesn't exist because although the school side, the school committee and the administration have their, uh, people in place, the city side does not. So as a, a Warwick resident and homeowner and taxpayer, it's very upsetting that the schools would have to, um, you know, uh, have this lag time between, uh, making these approvals and then having to wait for this second stage. And as far as that, uh, legislation goes, there are four exemptions, um, that the Budget Commission cannot touch. One, as previously stated, has to do with the new schools, but there are three others, too. And so, um, I know there is, I'm not going to, uh, say what they are, but there are these like rumblings as to what can be paid and what can't be paid, but those exemptions are pretty clear. So, uh, the Budget Commission needs to follow those exemptions that are now law. Just, you know, just a little reminder to the city side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Netco. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? Please.
Hi, my name is Kathy Sundberg, and I'm a 33-year Warwick resident, parent of three children that have been through the schools. I'm representing a group of citizens that are concerned about keeping our schools safe havens of learning and development for all students regardless of their immigration status. I had sent an email to all of you and to Ms. Stanbrook, um, talking about, uh, the NEA has a policy and North Kingston is developing a policy regarding safe schools, making safe zone, schools safe zones, um, so that ICE cannot come in and remove students or question students. Does the Warwick School Department have a policy? I looked through and I couldn't find anything specific to immigration.
Unfortunately, we're not able to respond to public comment, but if you stick around for a couple seconds after the meeting, I'll get your email address and I'll forward you something.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? All right. Seeing none. Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, for the past two years, we've had the pleasure of having Ms. Tedeschi support this committee. Ms. Tedeschi, for those of you who don't know, she serves in two roles. There's only two individuals in the school district who serve both the school committee and the school administration. And that's Ms. Tedeschi and that's also Attorney Hennius. So they have a very difficult job of balancing the needs of both parties, supporting both of us. She puts in a tremendous amount of work in helping to prepare and coordinate these meetings. We put a lot of pressure on us, onto her, constantly having high expectations for her. So Ms. Tedeschi, today, I went out and got something. If you like it, it's from the administration, Ms. Hazelwood, Ms. Kirby Chapman and myself. If you do not like it, it is from Mr. McCaffrey, Mr. Hennius, Mr. Wiggins and Mr. Testa. And we'll throw in Bruce and Sean just for fun. So thank you for everything that you've done. Yeah, you can get 24 seconds to say something for 24 months of service. No? Okay. You could say anything, really. This could be dangerous. All right. Future meetings. The Warwick Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, April 9th, at 6:00 PM. The school committee but, meeting on the budget is being held Thursday, April 17th, at 5:30 PM. The next policy subcommittee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th, at 4:30 PM. The next building committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 7th, at 7:30 AM. The next monthly school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 13th, at 6:30 PM. We're going to start to schedule those finance subcommittee meetings now that we have finance department up and running and everything firing on all cylinders. So be on the lookout for the fiscal subcommittee dates now coming back out that we're fully staffed. And the next health and wellness subcommittee meeting is TBD. Being that there are no other matters before this committee, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Testa and Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are adjourned at 7:57.